I want to tell you about Haney Realty and Property Management. It's my dad's business, but he has a lot of really nice and smart people who work with him. When people want to sell or buy a house, or some land, they call my dad and his friends at Haney Realty and Property Management. It must be a lot of fun because every time I see them, they're smiling. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Give them a call at 347-9150.
M&amp;M Staffing LLC is Giles County's locally owned staffing agency. Owner John Brayton Harper, Cree Holt, and Mercedes Houston are from Giles County. They know Giles County and they care about this community. M&amp;M Staffing supports local schools, athletes, organizations, and causes. When you're looking for your next career or looking to fill a position, look no further than your locally owned business, M&amp;M Staffing. Find us on Facebook, 450 Bennett Drive, or fill out an application online at m&ampmstaffing.net.
Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas and would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you dig.
Haney Realty and Property Management considers a privilege to help you find the right deal. Hi, this is Daniel Haney. Are you listing, selling, buying, renting, or looking for property management? Let Haney Realty and Property Management create the plan that fits your needs. Our agents bring diverse experience and knowledge of Giles County, Middle Tennessee, and North Alabama. We offer a friendly, professional, and creative approach to your specific needs. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Call 347-9150 and find our listings at haneyrealtypm.com.
M&amp;M Staffing LLC is Giles County's locally owned staffing agency. Owner John Brayton Harper, Cree Holt, and Mercedes Houston are from Giles County. They know Giles County and they care about this community. M&amp;M Staffing supports local schools, athletes, organizations, and causes. When you're looking for your next career or looking to fill a position, look no further than your locally owned business, M&amp;M Staffing. Find us on Facebook, 450 Bennett Drive, or fill out an application online at m&ampmstaffing.net.
I'm Tiffany Haygood, a local Realtor with Remax Southern Real Estate, serving Giles County and the surrounding areas. When you choose a local real estate agent, you're working with someone who's a part of your community. When you choose a local Remax agent, you get the knowledge and experience of a local agent combined with the power of a worldwide real estate network and cutting-edge technology. If you're looking to buy or sell a home or land, I would be honored for the opportunity to work hard for you. Give me a call at 931-703-3952.
A healthy body strengthens your mind. Southern Tennessee Regional Health System Pulaski has a few tips to help you stay focused on your health. Here are a few simple things you can do to relieve stress and anxiety. Eat smart. There's no time like now to take on healthy eating habits. Stay active. Physical activity is one of the best ways to improve and maintain good physical and mental health. At STRHS Pulaski, they care about your health and happiness all year long. Visit them at southerntennesseepulaski.com.
Pulaski Citizen Live is doing Giles County sports and community events like they've never been done before. Video of local government meetings and community events, as well as streaming of high school, middle school, and youth league games. Football, basketball, baseball, softball, soccer, and more are all on the PCL schedule throughout the year. Get your game called by the most recognized sports announcers in Giles County. So are you looking for your next meeting, event, or game? Make sure you tune into Pulaski Citizen Live on YouTube and on the Mixler app.
Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas and would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you dig.
I'm Tiffany Haygood, a local Realtor with Remax Southern Real Estate, serving Giles County and the surrounding areas. When you choose a local real estate agent, you're working with someone who's a part of your community. When you choose a local Remax agent, you get the knowledge and experience of a local agent combined with the power of a worldwide real estate network and cutting-edge technology. If you're looking to buy or sell a home or land, I would be honored for the opportunity to work hard for you. Give me a call at 931-703-3952.
Have you considered a career in nursing? Nursing offers many options, specialties, and working environments. Nurses make a real difference in people's lives. Nursing degree programs exist across the country as well as online. Southern Tennessee Regional Health System Pulaski is seeking highly energetic and positive people who are looking for a career. STRHS Pulaski provides excellent compensation, employee benefits, and growth opportunities. Do you think you've got the right stuff? Contact nursing recruiter Dana Smith at 931-279-8509.
Hey guys, it's Tamika Russell with PES Energize. Effective May 1st, we will no longer offer cable TV service. However, we will continue to offer high-speed internet and home phone services to our customers. If you have any questions, please give us a call at 931-363-2522. Hey guys, it's Tamika Russell with PES Energize. Effective May 1st, we will no longer offer cable TV service. However, we will continue to offer high-speed internet and home phone services to our customers. If you have any questions, please give us a call at 931-363-2522.
Pulaski Citizen Live is doing Giles County sports and community events like they've never been-
Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas and would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you dig.
Hi, I'm Hagan Haney, and I wanted to tell you about Haney Realty and Property Management. It's my dad's business, but he has a lot of really nice and smart people who work with him. When people want to sell or buy a house, or some land, they call my dad and his friends at Haney Realty and Property Management. It must be a lot of fun because every time I see them, they're smiling. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Give them a call at 347-9150.
Video of local government meetings and community events, as well as streaming of high school, middle school, and youth league games. Football, basketball, baseball, softball, soccer, and more are all on the PCL schedule throughout the year. Get your game called by the most recognized sports announcers in Giles County. So are you looking for your next meeting, event, or game? Make sure you tune into Pulaski Citizen Live on YouTube and on the Mixler app.
Have you considered a career in nursing? Nursing offers many options, specialties, and working environments. Nurses make a real difference in people's lives. Nursing degree programs exist across the country as well as online. Southern Tennessee Regional Health System Pulaski is seeking highly energetic and positive people who are looking for a career. STRHS Pulaski provides excellent compensation, employee benefits, and growth opportunities. Do you think you've got the right stuff? Contact nursing recruiter Dana Smith at 931-279-8509.
Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas and would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you dig.
It's 5:00 AM, 5:00 PM. So we're going to go ahead and get started. Call, call, please.
20 commissioners present.
And before we open court, we're going to recognize Boy Scout Trip 46 from Linville. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. They are working on their communications and citizenship badges. Great to have you all.
All right. You can't afford a gentleman's announcement with the honorable Brown fellow today.
Let us pray. Our Father, we're so blessed to be here today, and Father, we're thankful for this beautiful day that you truly bless us with. Thankful for the sunshine, that we can enjoy the breeze, that we can just feel upon us, and Father, we can just see your creation, and how powerful and beautiful you truly are, Father. And Father, we pray for our schools, and we pray for our county. We pray for all those first responders and all those who work so close for this county that you'll continue to be with them, protect them, and give them the guidance and help that they need as they work upon this land. And Father, we pray for our leaders. We pray for, from a federal to a state to a local level, that you'll be with these men and women, be with us as we govern upon this land, that you'll bless us with wisdom and discernment from your word. And Father, we're thankful for those who are willing to serve and put forth their efforts. Father, we're thankful for our military men and women that have fought for this great country, for the freedoms and liberties that we should never take for granted. We pray that you'll be with them and be with their families, continue to protect them and give them the things that they stand in need of. And Father, we pray for those who are weak and sick. There are many on our hearts that we may know, maybe even some that we don't know, that are dealing with just different ailments, anything from sickness to death, and Father, even depression and other areas of their lives that they may be struggling that they go through. We pray that they look to you for that love and guidance in their lives. And Father, we pray now that you will prick our hearts, that you'll stir us, help us to have a desire to want to know you and to seek and be pleasing to you. Help us to gain wisdom unto your word, and help us to be righteous in your side. Help us to focus upon you, Father, to know right from wrong, to know that there is an absolute truth. May we always stand for what's right, for what's pure, and what's true. Forgive us, Lord. Help us to come when we fall short. Help us, Father, through these tough and difficult times. May the blood of Christ always cover us through these imperfections. And Father, we thank you for salvation and the hope that we have of being with you one day. We ask all of these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I feel the victory to the flag of the United States of America, and to the rebellion for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business?
First order of business is approval of the minutes of March 2023, regular session of Giles County, let's let it body and amended change, amended page for the unfinished business jump in.
The floor is open for a motion. Mr. Hopkins?
Motion approved.
I'm sorry, I should have given you a preview. You can make motions and request to speak with your device, and we're going to try to use that through this proceeding to get used to it. So, Matthew, would you hit? Motion, there we go. And if anyone would like to make a second, you can use your device. And I've got a second for Mr. Reed. Is there any comments or discussion on the minutes? Yes, Mr. Reed?
Dr. Reed? I noticed in the minutes, in the unfinished business, it says, "My motion was made and seconded that indicated for you and the city of Pulaski to negotiate the contract." That was not quite correct. It was said that you, the mayor of the city of Pulaski, and your respective attorneys to review and adopt this for enactment.
Okay, we can't adopt. We have to review and then come to the commission-
Well, I understand. I did not use the word negotiate. That's what I was saying. And in the original minutes, it said adopted, but-
And that was, and that's why I changed it from adopt, because I can't adopt. Okay. So, is there a better word that you prefer to use instead of negotiate?
Can't think of one off the top of my head. Other than, the implication was, yes, you would negotiate, but it was with the intent to approve, negotiate the contract for approval.
Okay. Roger. So, no need for a change? Or do you want to make a word change?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to make a change to the word? Wording?
I'll leave it as is.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion on the minutes? Ms. Jones?
Under approval of minutes, it says the promotion of Tom DiPaolo. That probably wasn't common.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there are no other discussions, please vote.
And the vote is 20 ayes.
And the motion carries. Next order of business?
The next order of business is the Economic Development Director Report.
Okay. The Giles County unemployment for February 2023 was 3.4%. Statewide, it was 3.5%, nationally, 3.6%. And an update on the EDC director position, the Personnel Committee meets this Wednesday to review the candidate pool for our director vacancy, and I'll keep the commission apprised as the hiring process moves forward. Any questions or comments on the EDC? Thank you. Next item on the agenda? It is public comment. Public comment is available to anyone that would like to speak on an agenda item for the day, and I would just ask that you come to the podium, use the microphone, introduce yourself in your name, and there's a piece of paper there. If you could just write your name down for law-keeping purposes, if you're going to speak, just write your name so we have that recorded. So, is there any public comment this evening?
If not, next order of business is election, and the first election is for the 7th District County Commissioner to serve, replacing Morris Woodard until the next regular election.
Okay, there's a statutory process to this that I'll just review. The process for filling a commissioner's vacancy is provided in Tennessee Code 5-5-111. We're going to be following that process to the letter. As background, we circulated public notice of this election for 14 days. That's twice the, twice that required by law, and eligible candidates are registered voters who live in the 7th District. The list of names submitted to me for consideration are Tammy Mathis and Mr. Marcus Houston. Are there any other interested candidates that would like to make themselves known? Okay. Next, no public nominations are permitted. Nominations must be made by sitting commissioners. Nominations do not expire as second. Nominations will close with a motion and a second, and then a majority vote. So, the floor is open for nominations? I'm sorry, Mr. Woodard?
Yes, I thought that we would be called to make comments. Is it too late to make comments?
Okay, with the commission's permission, may I go back to public comment? I'm sorry, Mr. Dr. Reed, would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. In a second, by Mr. Pador. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, sorry, Mr. Woodard. We'll go back to the public comment period, and Mr. Woodard, do you have the podium?
Thank you.
We've got five minutes.
Well, it is on. For those of you who do not know me, and I know most of you do, but my name is Morris Z. Woodard. And effective March 1st of this year, I resigned my position in District 7 on the county commission, and we're here today to hopefully elect a person to fill that seat for us. Now, it was a very hard decision. Some sleepless nights were spent. Not all night, it's hard for me to stay awake all night, but, but there was a very hard decision in trying to, trying to come up with this thing as to whether or not to resign or not. But for, for personal reasons, I decided that it was best for me, and not only best for me, but also for the county, if I should turn that seat over to a younger person, a person who is much better qualified than I am, and would be able to carry forward what was learned, because it is a good learning process. I tell people now, since I've retired, I can learn half as much and know twice the time, and I hope that is not the case with most of you. But in trying to decide who would I recommend to fill my position, the only name that came to mind at the time was that of Ms. Tammy Mathis. And actually, it's the only name that I still know of that I would recommend to fill this seat. She, of course, is a resident of District 7. I learned also, did a little research, and had some help doing this, but I learned the process for getting somebody into the seat, and how we would do that. So I contacted, or we contacted Ms. Mathis to see if she was interested, and thankfully she was. And she is a patriotic person. I want to say first of all that she has been a resident of Giles County for 46 years. I don't know, maybe a lot of you have been a resident longer than that, I have, but not all at one time. But she was six years old when she came here, and we haven't, we haven't ended her daily ministry rung her off. She still larks Giles County. She is a patriotic person. She is an honorably discharged veteran of the US Army. She has an MBA degree, and master's degrees are not easy to come by. I had a joke about one that I have, but I won't tell you. But nevertheless, she has an MBA. She has worked for the state of Tennessee for quite a few years. I don't know if it is, well, I don't know how many years she's worked for the state of Tennessee, but she's worked for the Department of Children's Services. She's worked for the Tennessee Department of Corrections and the Supervisory Office. And she has worked, I believe, for the past 16 years, maybe, as she might correct me after a while if this is not right, for the District Attorney General's Office for the 22nd Judicial District. And she is at the present time the office manager, the Pulaski office of the 22nd Judicial District of the District Attorney General's Office. She, she has a lot of knowledge. She is a Christian, a constitutional conservative, I will say, or a constitutional originalist as I am. I found, after I met Jeff and Mrs. Mathis, it didn't take me long to find that we shared a lot of, a lot of thoughts and a lot of beliefs in common. I know that she is a Christian. I will tell you that she is a member of the Wales Baptist Church and has been for some years, and we believe that, or at least what I refer to as a constitutional originalist is one who believes that the Constitution needs to be read and abided by, abided by in the way that it was written and not warped out of shape like we're doing it so much today.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
15 seconds?
15 seconds. There are a lot of things that we need to talk about here, but I want you to prayerfully consider Mrs. Mathis to fill this seat. Thank you very much.
Since we are back in the public comment area of the agenda, are there any other public comments? Okay, so we're back to the commissioner election, and the floor is now open for nominations. Ms. Goolsby?
I would like to nominate Marcus Houston.
Thank you. And there's no need for a second. Ms. Guthrie?
Yes, on behalf of Mr. Woodard, and at his request, I would like to nominate Tammy Mathis to fill his vacancy.
Okay, so we have Mr. Marcus Houston and Ms. Tammy Mathis. Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations. Mr. Reiser, a second by Mr. Hopkins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
May I speak on behalf of Mr. Houston?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I've known Mr. Houston quite a while now, and he is, he would be an asset to our commission just for his knowledge of budgets, but also, he is a Christian, he is a Giles- he is a Christian, he is a Giles County resident that has been here, uh, his children have been raised here, his wife works in our school system, uh, he has served on numerous committees for, I don't want to list them all, because we'd be here all day, but I just want to say he has been through several things, including the electric system. So he knows policies, he understands policies, he is someone who I think is built to be the most fair human I've ever met. He does listen to every side, I don't want anybody to think he's just here, because I asked him, I did not. His name came to me, and I offered to nominate him, but he definitely has asked for this seat, so I think he deserves our vote, he would be a great asset to our community, on the commission, and I'd like for y'all to vote for him. Thank you.
Is there any other commissioner discussion before we go to vote?
Oh, can I add one more thing?
You have ten minutes.
Oh.
Commissioners have ten minutes.
One thing I did want to say, and this is very important to me, this is not my vote. This is not my seat. I represent the people in my district, and I have always been big on talk to my district, ask my district, my district contacted me quickly. I honestly can say Maurice Woodard and then a couple, a husband and wife, contacted me to vote for Ms. Mathis, this is not anything negative against Ms. Mathis, every other person in, I keep counting after 32, has contacted me and asked me to vote for Mr. Woodard. So, my, Mr. Houston, sorry. They have spoke loudly, they have talked about his mannerisms, his fairness, I think I've heard the word fairness numerous times, but these are the people in my district that were contacting me. So I vote for my district, not for me. Again, I don't represent me, I represent my district, and our district has spoke very loudly and proudly for Mr. Houston, at least to myself. So, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any other commissioners who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please. Okay, hold on.
Going to be a roll call, but we'll start with District 7. Ms. Pruitt?
Houston.
Ms. Guthrie?
Houston.
Mr. Sutton?
Houston.
Ms. Brown?
Houston.
Mr. Bedore?
Houston.
Mr. Revellson?
Mathis.
Ms. Jones?
Mathis.
Mr. Butler?
Mathis.
Mr. Satch?
Mathis.
Mr. Brady?
Houston.
Mr. Hopkins?
Mathis.
Mr. Reiser?
Mathis.
Ms. Guthrie?
Mathis.
Mr. Adams?
Mathis.
Mr. Wilber?
Houston.
Mr. Wall?
Houston.
Mr. Jones?
Mathis.
Ms. Woodard?
Houston.
Dr. Laker?
Mathis.
And Ms. Hurd?
Houston.
It's a 10-10 tie, and I have to lead with Mr. Woodard, who vacated the seat and chose Mrs. Mathis, so I vote for Ms. Mathis. That said, it's, it takes a lot to step in and even put your name forward to run for this office, so, Mr. Houston, thank you for putting your name forward, I really appreciate that. And Ms. Mathis, congratulations. We're going to take a five-minute recess just to prepare for the oath of office, and then we'll follow through with the rest of the meeting.
M&amp;M Staffing LLC is Giles County's locally-owned staffing agency. Owner John Brayton Harper, Cree Holt, and Mercedes Houston are from Giles County. They know Giles County and they care about this community. M&amp;M Staffing supports local schools, athletes, organizations, and causes. When you're looking for your next career or looking to fill a position, look no further than your locally-owned business, M&amp;M Staffing. Find us on Facebook, 450 Bennett Drive, or fill out an application online at mandmstaffing.net.
Pulaski Citizen Live is doing Giles County sports and community events like they've never been done before. Video of local government meetings and community events, as well as streaming of high school, middle school, and youth league games. Football, basketball, baseball, softball, soccer, and more are all on the PCL schedule throughout the year. Get your game called by the most recognized sports announcers in Giles County. So are you looking for your next meeting, event, or game? Make sure you tune into Pulaski Citizen Live on YouTube and on the Mixler app.
Hey guys, it's Tameka Russell with PES Energize. Effective May 1st, we will no longer offer cable TV service. However, we will continue to offer high-speed internet and home phone services to our customers. If you have any questions, please give us a call at 931-363-2522.
Hi, I'm Hagan Haney, and I wanted to tell you about Haney Realty and Property Management. It's my dad's business, but he has a lot of really nice and smart people who work with him. When people want to sell or buy a house, or some land, they call my dad and his friends at Haney Realty and Property Management. It must be a lot of fun, because every time I see them, they're smiling. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Give them a call at 347-9150.
I'm Tiffany Haygood, a local Realtor with RE/MAX Southern Real Estate, serving Giles County and the surrounding areas. When you choose a local real estate agent, you're working with someone who's a part of your community. When you choose a local RE/MAX agent, you get the knowledge and experience of a local agent, combined with the power of a worldwide real estate network and cutting-edge technology. If you're looking to buy or sell a home or land, I would be honored for the opportunity to work hard for you. Give me a call at 931-703-3952.
Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated to providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean-burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas and would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you dig.
Hey guys, it's Tameka Russell with PES Energize. Did you know PES Energize now offers routers to their internet customers? Give us a call today at 931-363-2522 to start experiencing the ultimate wifi.
Haney Realty and Property Management considers a privilege to help you find the right deal. Hi, this is Daniel Haney. Are you listing, selling, buying, renting, or looking for property management? Let Haney Realty and Property Management create the plan that fits your needs. Our agents bring diverse experience and knowledge of Giles County, Middle Tennessee, and North Alabama. We offer a friendly, professional, and creative approach to your specific needs. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Call 347-9150 and find our listings at haneyrealtypm.com.
I'm Tiffany Haygood, a local Realtor with RE/MAX Southern Real Estate, serving Giles County and the surrounding areas. When you choose a local real estate agent, you're working with someone who's a part of your community. When you choose a local RE/MAX agent, you get the knowledge and experience of a local agent, combined with the power of a worldwide real estate network and cutting-edge technology. If you're looking to buy or sell a home or land, I would be honored for the opportunity to work hard for you. Give me a call at 931-703-3952.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to work, and then we'll roll call, please. Not with your tablets, we'll just call the lab.
Ms. Hurd? Present. Dr. Laker?
Present.
Ms. Woodard?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wall?
Here.
Ms. Wilber?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Guthrie?
Here.
Mr. Reiser?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Ms. Brady?
Present.
Mr. Satch?
Present.
Ms. Butler?
Present.
Ms. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Revellson?
Present.
Mr. Bedore?
Present.
Ms. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Sutton?
Present.
Ms. Schoolspie?
Present.
Ms. Pruitt?
Present.
And Ms. Mathis?
Present.
Twenty-one, Mr. President.
Okay, during the recess, the 7th District Commissioners met, they have filled their committee assignments, so that Ms. Mathis will be filling the, uh, committee positions that Mr. Woodard helped, so Ms. Mathis is on the Audit Committee, Longform Committee, and Environmental Committee. Okay, next order of business?
Next order of business is election of the judges publicly at large, who have the following three judges, they are Em David Boyd, Laura Dixon, excuse me, those are the usual. Em David Boyd, Laura Dixon, Savannah Yen, Michelle C. Piper, Jennifer Lee Weiss, and the newals are Addison C. Carden, Jennifer D. McHine, Tammy Lynn Pachasi, Randy K. Thigpen, Jimmy Lee Tidwell, Timothy P. Underwood, and Mindy Carnathan Beers.
Are your tablets ready to make motions?
No, she's over.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Schoolspie, and a second by Mr. Butler, in equal access. Any comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
And the vote is 21 ayes.
Motion carries. Next order of business? Uh, next we have two committees that, uh, Mr. Woodard had been a member of, one is the Agpar Committee, and the other is the Public Records Committee. We can do these separately, but just to, um, I can simplify, for the Agpar Committee member, I'm proposing Terry Jones, and for Public Records, I'm proposing Evan Bedore. And floor is open for a motion. Okay, so, a motion by Ms. Schoolspie, second by Mr. Butler.
No, no, it's the other one.
No, we can't.
We still don't have any.
Bear with us.
We are.
Okay. So, did you make a motion?
I did. I was just saying the second.
You're all over this tablet, and, uh, second by Ms. Jones. Any comments or, um...
Make a motion to combine the two together.
Okay. And second by Mr. Satch, is there any, any concern with that? Mr. Adams?
Who was the first one, I didn't get it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones for the Agpar, and Mr. Bedore for the Public Records Committee. And we have a motion and a second to combine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any comments or discussion on the nominations before you take a vote? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Okay, please vote.
We had, and there is 19 ayes and 28 ayes.
Okay, motion carries. And the next item on the agenda is reports.
Today's reports are the Finance Director's Report for February of 2023, which includes the Giles County General Fund, Drug, American Risking Plan, Probation Fund, Highway, School, Federal Food Service, Debt Service, Capital Projects, Highway Capital Projects, Education Capital Projects, and Educa, Education Capital Number Two, and other capital projects. We also have the Quarterly Reports of Giles County Highway Department, and Giles County Health Department, and Giles County Laboratory Reports.
And the floor is open for a motion? Looks like we have a motion by Mr. Jones, and a second by Mr. Wilber. Any comments or discussion? Mr. Wall?
What is the motion?
That, that's something we got to correct with the system, yeah, the, the motion is, we need a motion if you want to combine these. Mr. Jones?
I'll combine.
Motion to combine. Motion to combine, and a second by Mr. Wilber. Any comments or discussion on combining? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I got to work with this software. Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Jones, and a second by Mr. Wilber, that was on that?
Yeah, it was the voice that.
Okay. So now that we've agreed to combine them, we need a motion that's more specific than just pressing a button. When you, when you press the button, you need to articulate what your motion is, like, uh, to, to pass these reports. Mr. Jones?
I did motion to put them all together.
You did, and now it's passed, now we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay. I'm sorry. Second, and a second by Mr. Wilber. Okay, please vote. Ms. Pruitt? And you? We haven't had your votes.
It is 21 ayes.
Okay, Carol's got the toughest job up here, so bear with us as we learn this software. Okay, the next item on the agenda?
Next item is contracts agreements and grants. We have a vendor service agreement from Swiss American Financial Credit Services Incorporated. This is a trustee's office, uh, uh, agreement which is signed.
Okay, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Wilber?
Motion to approve. Second.
Sorry, where did the second come from? Okay, Mr. Bedore, I heard that one first. Any comments or discussion? Yes, Mr. Jones?
I think Ms. Schoolspie's got the second.
I do, it's on the computer.
It's on the computer, okay, Ms. Schoolspie. This is like the first one to the buzzer, right? Yeah? Okay, any comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
And the vote is 21 ayes.
Motion carries. Next order of business?
The next order of business is resolutions. The resolution we have today is an amendment, is 2023-28, authorized... is 2023/28 authorized amendment of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, County General Fund One oh one.
Okay, the, uh, the background on this is, uh, this is the proposal that came out of the Budget Committee to improve the bypass signal. That would be coming out of county buildings for fifteen thousand dollars and, uh, proposed improvements to the animal shelter out of the fund balance, which is money that was set aside previously. That is twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So the motion's open for, or floor is open for a motion.
So now it's approved?
We have a...
No, the motion thing is...
Yeah, we have a motion from Ms. Pruey and a second by Mr. Bedore. Any comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Now we're ready.
The vote is twenty ayes and one ayes done.
Motion carries. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna thank Morgan for all her hard work on that animal shelter and saving us money and doing the best she can to give us the best deal every chance she gets.
She does great job, thank you. Okay, next order of business?
Next order of business is unfinished business.
Is there any unfinished, unfinished business? Seeing none, we move into new business?
And the next order of business is new business.
Okay, um, if, does anyone have anything, uh, on the, or the new business side other than the property business for the ambulance service? Okay, I'm gonna move forward with that with just, uh, some information for the public. Okay, I'm gonna give an overview of the long and arduous work of the Property Committee, uh, over the last months, uh, which primarily revolve around finding a site for the ambulance service. Uh, this evening, we'll be taking a vote on the full commission's preferred alternatives for moving forward with the project. Uh, first, I need to provide some financial context because the ambulance service isn't the only infrastructure issue confronting county government. Here's a broad list that I'm gonna overview here of the financial issues the commission is gonna be grappling with over the next few years in no particular order. This courthouse needs renovation work. It needs security upgrades, fire suppression, new mechanical systems, and critical structural repairs. Our engineers working on developing options for us and project phasing to manage the costs, but we're easily looking at costs in excess of ten million dollars. Number two, our schools need renovation work. Thankfully, the school system has its own general fund, but that well doesn't run terribly deep, and the price estimate to renovate three schools comes to twenty million dollars. So that's another big ticket obligation for the county. Add to that some other big ongoing projects. The county commission has committed four and a half million dollars to the implementation of broadband infrastructure. And the commission recently obligated six point six million dollars to implement the Tennessee Advanced Communication Network, which is gonna bring county-wide digital radio comms for our first responders. So there are other examples of county obligations, obviously, and that's the broad, big picture. Uh, here in 2023, we find ourselves behind on infrastructure recapitalization, and it falls to us on our watch to start making headway on work lists. So with that context, with the understanding that we got a number of big projects ahead of us, we're ready to deliberate on finding a site for our new ambulance service. According to the old meeting minutes, this project has been picked around for about fourteen years. And I, and this commission, I know whoever from the lot, they're committed to not pick it out for another four years. So our first step is to identify a preferred building site, and then with the commission's approval, I'm going to hire an engineering firm to proceed with preliminary site assessment and design. There are several site options. We have county-owned property, and then there's a forty-nine point four acre parcel of commercial real estate that's for sale. Uh, that commercial parcel is at the corner of the bypass and Highway eleven. The project committee had to discuss this site as a viable option, and I think we all agreed in the property committee to take this up first. Uh, if the commission approves the purchase of this property, then no other further action will be necessary this evening. Um, if the commission disapproves the purchase of the property, then the alternative will be, I'll move forward with an engineering firm to evaluate our county-owned properties as potential sites. But one thing at a time, the floor is open for a motion on the purchase of the property that we mentioned at the bypass and Highway eleven. Mr. Waller?
I'll make a motion to purchase the property.
Okay, motion by Mr. Waller to purchase the property. Is there a second?
Already have a motion.
I'm sorry, sir?
Already have a motion.
Okay, Mr. Reed?
Right.
What was your motion, sir?
Purchase the property.
Okay, favorably, will you accept the second? Okay. Any comments or discussion on purchasing the property? Mr. Jones?
I'd say before purchasing the property, if we vote to look at the property deeper, 'cause I think you're gonna need a corduroy, you're gonna need to know what's under that property. Just buying property for eight hundred thousand dollars, that's a, that's a chunk of change right there. And it's not even just to develop the land itself. We need to know a little more about the land, what's under it, before we just, uh, I think you need some contingencies on, on purchasing the land. I don't think we're ready to just say, unless you could buy it with, uh, contingency, you could do something with it.
You could sort of put in an offer with contingencies, and that would be part and parcel of a motion.
That's, uh, that's just a lot of money I, I feel like the county's gonna have to take on. That's just my thought.
Now, Mr. Adams?
Yes, I cannot see buying more property when we already got twenty, twenty-five.
Mr. Bedore?
If we're gonna add contingencies, the other I think that we discussed in committee was to verify the ingress egress. I think we had inquired and maybe got the feeling that we could add ingress, egress right there. But it's kind of a dangerous corner. I think that would be the other, in addition to what Mr. Jones was saying. So I said contingency out.
Mr. Butler?
Yes, I was just gonna address Mr. Jones's concerns. Uh, when we put in an offer to buy a piece of property, there's already a long list of contingencies that we can check boxes that have to be satisfied before the sale can go through. And then we can also add other contingencies in, in writing that have to be checked off too.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Uh, if you look at the sites that we're really considering, three here today. We're looking at the Ag Park. We're looking at, uh, the area over at the, uh, Rescue Squad Building and this, this property right here. Um, if, if we're looking at trying to, I guess, one of the things that concerns me is that for all these years, we as a commission have always tried to figure out what it takes for us to get by. But we haven't very often considered what it takes for us to get ahead. And if you look down the road, if we begin, uh, I'm concerned about the fact that appears the, the Ag Park is kinda migrating toward becoming a development property rather than a Ag Park with all the things that we'd like to put in there. And we've got other facilities that need to go, uh, like E nine one one. And I think that, that purchasing this property out there is a good, long-term investment. And if you talk to real estate agents in this county, they say that long-term, that would be a good investment. And folks will say, well, let's don't spend that money. Well, if you got a hundred thousand dollars in your savings account and you go buy a piece of property with it to enhance your investment, you've not spent that money, you've reinvested it. So we would be reinvesting. We've got about nine million dollars in general fund, which would be what I consider savings account. And the eight hundred thousand is a small, very small percentage of that to reinvest in a property that would be good for the future. So I think we just need to decide, do we wanna get by or do we wanna get ahead? Do we wanna look at right now or do we wanna look at the future? So I think long-term, future, we discuss bringing, uh, about four different emergency services together in one place. We do that down at the Ag Park. We're doing ourselves in on the Ag Park in a county that is making its number one source of income from agriculture. And we, we need to have a good agri park, which we already have a, uh, a plan for developing. And, and so as we look at developing that Ag Park, which could eventually become, uh, not a drain on the county, but self-sufficient or close to self-sufficient if we're working wrong. This needs to be something that we look at for the long-term future. And ten years from now, somebody will say, well, why didn't we buy that for that price ten years ago? So my, my opinion is that we need to invest in this property for the future.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. Ms. Goolsby?
Just, are we just going to say eight hundred thousand? Or are we going to offer and have set a limit here?
Well, that'd be up to you all. There's a little bit of history here 'cause we, we did previously put in a lower bid, and the, the comeback was eight hundred thousand dollars. That's the bottom line. If you would like to go lower, you can, I mean, you can suggest that.
I think we should start lower. Just because they, I mean, they think we want it and we're gonna buy it. You, we're not playing any games here because they already know what we're saying. I just don't think eight hundred thousand is the magic number for that property.
Okay. Mr. Reiden?
Yes, sir. I'm, I have to agree with Mr. Adams. They, we don't, we, we got property. There's no need to be spending that eight hundred thousand dollars on property. That'd go a long way on a building. Prepare to build one.
Yes, sir.
If they get the right one, dude. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'll pay close attention to, uh, what you started out with, with all the figures that we've got coming up. Those are things that has to be done. It's not an option. Those are things that's got to be done. Uh, yeah, we got ten million dollars, close to it in our fund balance, but that don't mean we can just, uh, use it when we've got other projects that we know are coming up. And we're sitting on land that would be very adequate for, uh, ambulance service. Uh, I can't see my people in District Two more, anybody in the county as far as goes wanting to buy an eight hundred thousand dollar piece of property. And yeah, it is a pretty place and it's got a good location. But I'm, I'm like Mr. Reiden, Mr. Adams. I just can't see us spending money buying more. We, uh, our history has failed us as far as being in the real estate market.
And Ms. Jones?
Supposedly, we have three, uh, properties to choose from. Um, I would like to deliberate between the Ag Park and the property we're speaking now because I would rank them, Ag Park first, and then the eight hundred thousand dollar piece of property, or whatever we put the end up in. I don't think the property at the jail should even be considered, um, meaning that it is in such a, um, difficult, uh, location to get in and out of. But, but just kind of make a motion to consider the eight hundred thousand dollar piece of property. You know, I might vote for it if, if it were up against the jail property. But if it's up against the Ag Park, I would vote for that part. So I'm kind of in a quandary. I don't want to, um, to go to, I don't want to, um, say that the jail property, um, come out here just because it's not, it is not all considered under one, uh, motion. I wish the ones making this motion would consider, um, all three properties and, and let us deliberate between the ones that are, are the most reasonable locations.
I think the reason the Property Committee decided to structure the motions this way is because we can't make a purchase piece of property the number two option and pursue number one while this land is for sale. I think we either need to purchase it or not. That's up for you all to deliberate. Mr. Reed?
Okay. I think the, the objective was to move this property out of the way, just like you said. And then that would leave the two remaining to sit in between. So if you like this property, then we vote to purchase that, and then we don't vote on the other two properties. That we just, uh, and, and then this property would have, we might would come back to those other two properties if we place a bid on the, the property out there at the bypass intersection of, uh, having no gravel, I mean, no rock and be under certain contingencies. Then if that fails, we're back to these other two again, even if this one passes. Is that not kind of what we're agreeing on?
That's what came out of the Property Committee. Yes, sir. Is there any, are there any other comments? I don't have any, uh, oh, Mr. Adams?
You know, I guess we'll just kick on, keep on, keep on kicking this thing. And I don't think neither property that we have mentioned is really a bad idea. You can make anything difficult. You know, they could say, well, there's a railroad track down there. It is a railroad track down there. But having our tired ambulance operator here, man, at one, at time or two, we'll have, we'll be short on ambulances. But you can't go hard to new ambulances just 'cause you, one day, you're gonna be short. And it may be a train coming down to there, but how often would he come? And if we put, if we put ambulance service down there, where we're talking about buying, that most people must think it's either river bottoms or creek bottoms because of the price of the railroad track. Go down there and be one little building, and the rest of it's a waste. Go down there and be a one little building listed and it's a waste. If we put one down there, you're still going to have, sometimes you're going to have four lanes to cross. What are you going to do, make them stop?
Okay. Mr. Fodder.
Of the county properties in consideration, I think I would have to favor the ag park. And I've said this in the property committee meeting and the ambulance committee meeting, the jail site is not optimal. I know it's got a quick response time on paper, but you hit there, you know, Thursday afternoon when the highway department's letting out, when Magnetti's letting out, when they're trying to get shipments in, it's a boondoggle at that intersection. And then trying to get an ambulance up and over Rocky Road and into town for something? That road's not safe at the posted speed limit, let alone running emergency traffic. It's just, it's not. I totaled a car out coming down that road one night and there's no shoulder, it was straight off in a ditch. So there's nowhere to go, nothing to do. You know, going the other direction, you're going to expand your response time by having to go around by Walmart and Home Depot and whatnot, or really expand it by coming around Columbia Highway and coming back into town. So I just, I do not think that the jail site is a good idea for the ambulance service. I know we've run the rescue squad out of there for 20 something years and it's been fine, but there's a whole lot of difference between running the rescue squad out of there once every four or five days or running four or five ambulances a day out of there.
Okay, so then there's a motion and a second to purchase the property and there's, there's some people that haven't spoken yet. Mr. Savage, you wanted to go?
Yes, sir. So I like to form my opinions by talking to the people on the front lines who actually do the work because they know more than all of us do. So I spoke with several people who worked for the ambulance department and all of their favorite properties were the two that we're discussing, the ag park and the bypass, all due to their accessibility. The thing on the ag park is, I'm on the ag park committee, there's a lot of land on the ag park that is not used. There is, in the recycling facility, there is part of that land that is not used. $800,000 not spent purchasing a property could be spent building nicer facilities and $800,000 saved could be used for any of the many other infrastructure needs that we have. And I can say that everyone that works for the ambulance department that I know is in favor of either property, but I think we should go with the one that costs less money.
Mr. Jones.
I think we need to separate like we talked about in the committee and let's vote if anybody wants to buy to look forward, to look ahead into the Highway 11 property, see if anybody's listening like we talked about in that.
That's where we are. I have a motion and a second to purchase the property. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so a yes vote is to purchase, a no vote is not to purchase. Okay, please vote.
Vote is four ayes and 17 noes.
Okay, motion.
One doubt, I think I punched the wrong button.
Okay, it was a vote.
No, I don't think that's what I said. I want to change, I want my vote shown that I voted no.
We didn't get that train. We didn't get that software train.
She changed it. I've got a big hammer back there.
Okay, just change. We can do it now. The motion failed. Okay, now that we've ruled out the property purchase, the remaining options are county two properties. That includes the ag park and the present site of fire rescue and all the comments that have been made on that are noted. At this point, I personally don't feel like I need a rank ordered list. What I need is your permission to hire an AE firm to do a preliminary site assessment and design for those two possible locations, or if you just want to limit it to one, that's up to you too. So the floor is open for a motion. Mr. Savage.
I'd like to make a motion to do what you said, but only on the ag park property.
Okay. And a second by Ms. Jones. Any comments or discussion? Mr. Jones.
As we've talked about in the committee, why don't we do it like we talked about in the property? We're doing it on both properties. That's what was talked about in the committee.
It was. But I got a motion and a second to just do the ag park. So that's, that's what, unless there's an amendment. Yes, Ms. Curry.
If we're going to look at the ag park, I would like for us to commit to looking beyond the convenience center. As Julie told us in the property committee meeting, there are no grants right now to build more convenience centers. So we wouldn't afford, we'd have to use more money to build a new one. And if we built it at the end of the airport, like has been discussed, we would need one on the southern end of the county. So if we're going to look at the ag park, we need to look beyond the footprint of the convenience center.
Any other comments? Okay, so a motion and a second to look exclusively at the ag park. I'm sorry, we can't do public comment now, Dr. Fite. So a yes vote is just review the ag park and a no vote means you don't agree. I'm sorry, Mr. Reiser, go ahead.
Yes, I like me and his motion for it to be both sides.
Okay. Is there a second for that? Okay, second by Mr. Wilber. Any comments or discussion on that amendment? Mr. Savage.
The people that work for the ambulance department that I've spoken with don't like that location, so per my view, I just believe it'd be a waste of time and money.
Okay. Mr. Jones.
I would like to say this, the head of the department of all three said he talked to him, that's, they were leaning toward the, over the rescue squad, so what, I mean, where do we go from there? They, I don't know, we get mixed. And I trust, I trust his, but also trust what Bill had come in and said also, and then the, and the committee we had talked about, looking at both of them.
Okay. Mr. Rubelski.
I think really looking at both properties, it's not going to do us any harm, in the sense of we've got a lot of needs. So I mean, we're talking about 911, we've talked about a, you know, corners area that we may need, we've got other facilities and things that we, that we may need. So it could turn into something else and by us just checking, that doesn't mean we're going to do that, but it could, it just throws all their, other options out there for us to look at. So I think it's just wise for us to look at everything that we've got.
Okay. Mr. Lom.
Do you have any idea what this assessment would cost per property?
I just asked the AE firm that I've been using, I asked that question today. I asked for just a template, you know, of a former project that they've done and then a con assessment for that if we're looking at one side or two sides. So I don't have that information to make a decision, but I'm asking about it. I, I think we're looking, just based on what we spent on this courthouse assessment, I think we're looking at probably $20,000 to $30,000 potentially.
First side.
Well, when you add a side that does not double the cost, a lot of their cost, you know, they're traveling here, et cetera, there's their overhead, so I don't, it wouldn't be a doubling of the cost. Ms. Jones.
Maybe at that price, I'm not sure that we need an assessment right now. I think we need to decide on the site and then see if it works, you know it's going to work at the ag park. I do think, and not necessarily, and I'm saying we don't have to put it where the recycling centers, I know we'd have to give permission, a lot of hoops we'd have to jump through. But as Kayla said, we did have room to put the ambulance service. But because I'm not an expert, I call Roy Grease, you know, everybody knows, been in the ambulance business for many, many years, decades. And his assessment is that the property at the jail is not a good property. He said that most of the people that work for the ambulance service, most of the drivers, they understand that it's not. I know there's bias among, you know, a couple of the, a couple of people that, oh, we've got to have it there at the, at the rescue squad slash jail property. But I'm thinking, why even have an AE firm look at it? You know it can be built at the ag park and if we're going to build it at the ag park, forget the assessment, let's just, let's just say, let's vote on the site and then decide, we have to, if we're going to put it at the jail, we probably wouldn't need an assessment because it's pretty small. And to build on top of any inferior buildings, another question is whether or not it'd be worthwhile and be throwing some money away, I think, for the future. If we build something decent, I think it'll last long. But I think, well, Rick, could you read me the actual motion just made?
Well, there was an amendment and that's what's being addressed. The amendment was to assess.
Both properties. Okay.
I'm going through the list here. Mr. Jones, you had your.
Yes, it's been a while. When we figure out the price, what it's going for the ag park, we do need to remember about, like Ms. Curry was talking about, the center that we have there, that's the number one center in the county. It far doubles all the rest of the center, so it is used quite a bit. We need to figure out maybe buying more land on the way from it unless you want this ambulance service right beside it or right behind it. It's something to think about.
Okay, Mr. Reiser.
I heard it well, what I want to say.
Okay. And Mr. Reedy.
Yes, if you're, the ambulance service don't have to sit right on the highway. That the depth of the recycle center is not that great and there's a lot of room between the recycle center and the entrance gate. So, you know, you can be relatively close having major entrance between the gate and the recycle center with the ambulance service expanding to the back. I am against using up the ag park property however, nobody gets their way, so we all have to kind of make some compromises. So I am willing to compromise my vote toward using that amount and try to dig the heels in for us expanding to the whole ag park and taking it up into development rather.
A site assessment does exactly what you're, what you're trying to explain because a site assessment isn't, we have plenty of land to building to fit here. We talked about the adjacencies and the impacts on the park, the impacts on the solid waste center and access road and heat res and heat ingress. They'd be looking at all that and probably doing a schematic of a building that would fit well on that property. So all those things would be included in the assessment. Mr. Rubelski.
Yeah, one thing to think about too is just a smart business and just kind of be good stewards here. We also have a proposal out there for the Abernathy Field for the survival flight proposal that's out. That could be a bargaining chip that they, you know, they wanted to possibly come in and lease and do some of our property, maybe why they're doing that, this could be where we could look at putting, you know, having them to front those expenses or something, even into that aspect of doing a convenience center into that location. So we're already looking at a proposal of that, looking at leasing of that, and this could be something that we look at possibly where we convenient into that area where they pay for that expense.
Okay, I don't have any other requests to speak, so we have a motion by Mr. Reiser or second by Mr. Wilber to consider both properties. Is there any other comments or discussion amongst the commissioners before we vote? Okay, same, Mr. Fite, we can't make a public comment. Dr. Fite, sorry. So this, this is not to move forward, remember this is just an amendment, so this amendment is just to include whether we do those two properties or not. So, you ready? Okay, please vote.
The vote is 14 ayes and 7 noes.
Motion carries. So I will be reaching out to an AE firm, getting hard numbers, making sure you know what those hard numbers are before I move forward, but I'm going to go to them and ask for this assess, assessment of two properties. Thank you. Is there any other new business? Ms. Curry.
I would just like to publicly thank Brindley for their leadership on getting our eagle back on the courthouse. I spent Saturday morning up here with my nephew to watch the best TV and it was really cool. We had a lot of interested people stop by, watch, and Brindley, they were great, so thanks.
Yeah, they assembled the craftsmen who, we were the last ones that brought that down 11 years ago, I think. They did fantastic job. So if anyone's concerned about the cost of that, that was covered by insurance. Okay.
What we just voted on was supposed to be on the amendment, not on the full motion that I originally made.
You are correct.
So we still need to do that.
Let's back up to that. So yes, we, thank you for that. So the amendment was to address both of those properties. Now we need a final tally to get your support to hire an AE firm. And I have, we did have a motion and a second. But the software lost. Okay, it was, it was Mr. Savage and Ms. Jones to look exclusively at the ag park. Now, now that we're looking at both properties, we probably need us another motion and a second to approve that. Because the amendment doesn't cover it.
Well, actually, the amendment was to now have the site assessment of both properties, so that would be.
Okay. So Mr. Rose, my parliamentarian tells me since that amendment covered both, it kind of supersedes the previous motion, so that carries.
So we don't have to vote on it.
Sorry.
So we don't have to vote on the original?
Correct. You have to vote on the motion. The motion to do the site assessment of both properties, they say vote, you can withdraw.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but the previous motion to just do the ag park, that was superseded by the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, so we need another motion.
Maybe we can vote on the amended motion. No, you vote amended.
Okay. It's Mr. Savage, it's your motion. Mr. Savage, you have a motion to look at the properties and do an AE firm assessment. Okay, I need a second on that. Well, the second, but Ms. Jones, your, your second was just for the ag park.
But now, but now it's amended, so we've got only amended motion.
Okay.
I think that's what their script is.
Okay. So, so we're going to vote if you're prepared. Okay. Are you, have you, are you showing it to vote?
I'll make the motion to go forward with two sides. I think, Ms. Curry.
Yeah, is your software showing that you voted?
No, it's showing that I made the motion and there meant a second.
Okay. Okay, so we're ready to proceed with a vote to hire an AE firm to look at these two properties. Please vote.
18 ayes, 2 noes and 1 at same.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks for your patience. If there's no other new business, I've just got one announcement to make, and that is I am pleased to announce that Ms. Willow Chavez will soon be stepping up as our new EMS chief. Ms. Chavez is from Meyerville. She's currently a critical care paramedic in Lincoln County and a national association of EMT instructor for technical medical education. Additionally, she's a qualified flight paramedic, one of the highest levels of achievement for a paramedic. She's a 15-year Army veteran, which included a 15-month combat deployment. She has extensive training and has a material response, a bachelor's degree in health sciences and paramedic care, and is just a year away from earning her master's in public service leadership and administration. It was an exhaustive search to find a new EMS chief because replacing the likes of Roy Grease is impossible. But I'm confident we found not only a highly trained paramedic, but a great leader, someone who can stand on Roy's shoulders and ensure continuous improvement to our ambulance service. Okay, congratulations again to Commissioner Mathis. Okay, is there any other business? If not, I'll entertain a motion from Mr. Wilber.
motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.